Thank you so much. Good. The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Right, so we call the March 24th, 2025 school committee meeting to order here at 6:01. And we'll start with a public comment. Seeing nobody logged in remotely nor in person, we will move on to our student report. Hi. Can you just remind us of your name again? I'm so sorry.
I'm Lauren Thompson. I'll be filling in for Jane Ryan tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Of course. To start with our sports news, spring sports are underway with a large number of athletes competing. Our cheerleading team placed sixth in New England. Congratulations to the SHS Model United Nations Club for their outstanding success at the recent Yale Model United Nations Conference held in Geneva, Switzerland. Many students earned awards for their top performances. Best delegate Chase Thistle, Quinn Corkins, Maeve Lynch, Alice McGirtian, Eva Schilberg. Outstanding delegate Savannah Garabedian, Liam Holden, Noah Shepherd, Halsey Wade. Honorable mention Mason Alvarez, Nikolai Bolkovich, and Kira Schneider. In addition, Situate High School was awarded the prestigious Best Large Delegation Award, standing out among a highly competitive group of private international schools. Congratulations to all students who attended. Situate High School sophomores will take the English MCAS exam on Tuesday, March 25th, and Wednesday, March 26th. Mrs. Lasner, Mr. LaRanger, and the English teachers expressed to sophomore students the importance of taking this exam seriously. Robotics competed in Revere last weekend and placed second in their category. Congratulations to all students, of the students and advisors. Guidance news, during Wind Block on March 3rd, students received an introduction to the course selection process for next year with their home-based teacher. Students will have until March 17th to make course selections through their Aspen portal. School counselors will follow up with all students individually to review course selections and discuss placement or level recommendation. These meetings will take place from March 17th through March 24th during ninth grade math classes, 10th grade chemistry classes, and 11th grade English classes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Couldn't get my microphone on. Thank you for filling in. So I got permission from your dad to embarrass you. She's not here to do so. Could you just share, because I think we're in the presence of greatness, and when we have our kids here, we want to share that. I was just born, she's a, Lauren's a wonderful student. She's Thompson's daughter. Or should I say, he's your father, right? And just had a, as a former track and field coach, I was just so impressed with how far you went on your track and field accomplishments this year. Could you share with us what, how your season went? A quick summary of how far you went and how you did, please?
This year I went to nationals, the indoor nationals of New Balance. It was a really cool experience and really like good accomplishment and my indoor senior season, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, next we have our leadership report. Assistant Superintendent, if you can start us off.
Sure, thank you. So this evening, I shared with you inside the packet our Student Opportunity Act Plan update. So, sorry I wasn't here, but I'm just gonna do a quick refresh that last year, Dr. Rab and the leadership team presented our Student Opportunity Act Plan, which takes place school year 2025 through 2027. This is part of DESI regulation. So as part of this process, the Student Opportunity Act Plan focuses on, you know, supporting students where gaps are identified and then admitting our district to evidence-based programs. So what I shared with you is our required update, which I put together and with the help of our team, and that we're required to have voted before April 1st and submit back to DESI. So this is a draft for your review. In our original plan, we talked about closing gaps, especially among students who, students with disabilities, and also accelerating the performance of our lowest performing 25%. And the evidence-based programs we committed to are the comprehensive tiered supports, which involves our MTSS work, the whole child review process, our data dashboard through Open Architects. Second one we committed to was an inclusive curriculum adoption process. So our work implementing the vision and Savvas Math Program, our professional development this year, and our development of benchmark assessments of math all support that. Finally, our third evidence-based program is resource allocation aligned to student success. So our work, there's a five-year plan that identifies implementing universal design for learning. Our team has worked together this year, and we recognize that establishing a strong foundation for what good teaching and learning looks like is an important first step. So we've committed to some work with research for better teaching to really establish that foundation and to have consistent, aligned evaluation practices. We're excited to kick that off this summer. So that's just a high-level overview of the 11-page document that I included, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this progress report.
Thank you. Any questions? So this is based off, so there was the one from last year, and now this is a second edition of that, or things that we're doing?
Correct. So there was the initial plan that was shared last year, which is a three-year plan, and then DESI requires us to articulate what progress has been made in the first year. So what I submitted was, or proposed is progress that we've made toward our three goals. They also provide an opportunity for us. We wanted to shift our focus, so that may happen to some districts. But we're not drastically shifting anything, we're just reporting on our progress. So this is an update on the overall plan that was submitted last year.
And Ryan, this is not associated with any money from DESI, right? This is just a regulatory thing that we have to do because of the Student Opportunity Act, is that right?
That's correct. We're, our district is not one of the ones that's receiving additional Chapter 70 support, but my understanding is that all districts have received a little bit more funding since the pass, passing of the Student Opportunity Act. So we do benefit, but not below the minimum amount that's been established.
Yeah. And do you feel like these things work together with the school-based improvement plans and the district goals as well? Like this is all kind of flowing together, do you think?
I think so. I think our principals, last week they were looking at their list of lowest-performing students to make sure that those supports were in place. We're thinking about benchmarking and making sure that aligns with our MTSS process. So it really aligns with our strategic plan. So I, I do think it's a bit of work to do this, but also
Yeah.
we're trying to close gaps for all of our students, and this makes you do it. So I think it, I think it all works together.
Anything else? So you said we need to vote on this next time, probably, or you need our vote?
It would be great if the committee could vote this evening so that we could submit for the April deadline.
We need to post this on our website. I was just gonna say we have to post this on the website, too, I think, right? Yeah.
I believe so. Well, first, we submit it with your approval.
That makes sense.
DESI reviews it.
Okay.
And then, when sometimes they give feedback, if they approve it, there's a future date, typically this summer, when all of them become public. Like our one last year is, is up on DESI's page.
Yeah.
So they will make it public after they approve it.
Okay.
On page five, we're talking about resource allocation aligned to student success, and the second paragraph, early evidence of change. There's a mention of better-aligned instructional resources and changes to math teacher practices. Are those practices referring to the Tier One instruction that's referenced in the top paragraph, or is it instruction generally? I was just wondering. Do you see where I am?
Yes. The sentence before refers to the professional development provided.
Yeah, the Savvas.
Yeah, and so I think part of our, as we've been talking about as a group, part of our work is an improved and aligned program. We also acknowledge that part of our work is ensuring that we're teaching in a way that supports strong math learning. So I think part of, resources are part of it, and so, so are teacher practice, and as our, the time moves forward, we will continue to look at both.
So I guess I, I just want clarity on, so when Savvas offers PD, is that on both the new instructional resources and practices? Is it one or the other? Is it a particular? I'm just curious, like, is that pedagogy for their, their resources? Or, I was just, if you could just share?
Yeah, I, I can find out. My assumption would be that it's both.
Okay.
But I, I can absolutely follow up to see.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I, I'm only asked because there's a explicit note about, you know, the, the vision for high-quality Tier One instructions. So just getting a sense to make sure that that goal is aligning with the early evidence is all I'm asking. More, more of a curiosity. I don't mind voting, it's just an expansion of the information.
All right. Take a motion on Student Opportunities Act Plan update.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act Plan Progress Report for fiscal year 2025 as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we have our Director of Special Education, Dr. Boebert.
Teaching? I'm giving the doesn't sound
Not including.
So I'm giving the annual update on special education that I typically do in March. I'm gonna pull up the PowerPoint minute. Feel free to interrupt me and talk if you have any questions. Okay. So tonight I'm gonna speak about our student population, students on IPs, their disability profiles, a number of students, and the various placements where they're at. I'm going to talk about funding and grants, Circuit Breaker, and then give an update on our integrated monitoring review from the state, which we just received our final report this week, so it's breaking news. So, okay. So basically, we always count our students October 1, and that amount of students on IPs are used to determine funding for the, for the next year. So, and I also do a count in March, so we see where we were in October 1, we see where we are in March, and I have some comparison data here. So as of October 1, we had 519 students on IPs. This includes 496 students that were enrolled in attending our elementary, middle, or high school here in Situate, plus 28 students that were enrolled in out-of-district programs but funded by us. We also had an additional 23 students on IPs who were either homeschooled or in what we call parentally-placed private schools. So schools such as Inlay or Thayer, schools that are not necessarily in Situate, but the families live in Situate. So these students are, need to be evaluated, and we need to have annual reviews for them and run the IP process for them, as well as homeschool students. Our disability rate for students in Situate on IPs hasn't really changed much, so it was 18.7%. Last year was 18.5%. This date rate is 20.6%. So we're certainly under that. If you compare the numbers, we are slightly increased by five students from October 1, 2024 to, compared to the previous year. So that's, I would say, a negligible change. If you look at the other, the other dates, I would say we're trending increased number of students on IPs overall. So when you look at March 2023, we had 532 students on IPs. However, we're trending slightly down for out-of-district programs for the, the students that we paid for, and we're trending a little bit up for these students in the private schools. In terms of the disabilities, so the state had, we're categorical state to determine a disability category to pre-student, pre-4 being put on an IP, even though we recognize, no, not, all students are different, even students with same disability can present very differently. One of the, the, I would say, kind of flexible category is the developmental delay category, because that is not necessarily a disability, it's just a student's presenting with lagging skills in various areas. They would need to be determined to have a disability at some point after age nine, because the state only recognizes this disability, developmental delay disability from age three to age nine, but does give us that flexibility. But basically, if you look at the big white green, that represents all the students that are on, that are, that are identified as having a specific learning disability, so dyslexia, dyscapulia, dysgraphia, et cetera, mostly, you know, reading disabilities. So that is our most prevalent disability, which is typical. So we have 31.8%. That is followed by the health category disability. Health can be a medical disability, but more commonly, that represents students that have ADHD or ADD, so that follows, that falls under the health umbrella. So that is 18%, and then that's followed by the developmental delay, which I mentioned can, you know, may rectify itself, or some students may eventually be put on another category like learning disability or autism, et cetera. And then the next most prevalent category is autism at 12.5% and then communication. So this data is based on 559 students in March, and this is all the students on IPs, including out-of-district.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I just couldn't tell on that last slide, the colors.
Yeah.
Is the 15.2 the developmental delay?
No, that is, yes, it is.
I was just curious.
I know, the, I wish the colors were like much different.
A little different.
Because there's like three shades of green, three shades of blue. You know, orange is out there, but then there's like a dark orange that's really little.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
And then the next slide, I just kind of represent the differences between all of our students and the students going out of district. So the big category, the light green, is almost 50% of the students attending out-of-district programs are eligible for a disability of autism. And then that is followed by emotional disability, which didn't even really show up in the other category. So 14.8% emotional, and then the next most prevalent is health at 11%. And then we have 7% for multiple disabilities, so moderate to severe disabilities that may impact all areas of communication, autism, et cetera. And then intellectual, which is typically determined by the IQ and life skills, so some percent of the students. So you can see where the students that are out of district, you know, they tend to have a little bit more needs than the students that we provide services effectively or within the district. So in terms of the funding piece, we obviously, we, we get a lot of our funding from the town, from the states, we thank all the taxpayers. We also have federal grants, entitlement grants, that basically you fill out the grant correctly, you get the money, you're entitled to that. It is based on that October 1 count from the previous year. And then we have other grants, sometimes there's a competitive grants. I wanna give a big shout-out to Julie Ward, who's helped with the MEKO Special Education Grant, as well as the 274 Grant. That's a training grant that last year we got $20,000, this year we got $10,000 to help us with the new IP. So that was like a new grant last year and this year. The other big source of funding is Circuit Breaker reimbursement. I have two slides on that, stay tuned. And then we also bring in students from other districts if they don't have a program for them. So last year we had six students, this year we have six, but we have one that's just started and one that's just about to leave. So we charge student, the district's tuition, as we call them, the non-resident students, they become part of our programs, they're our students, but we are not, I mean, we're not physically responsible for them, and we actually do get funding that goes towards those programs for staffing and supplies. And then obviously, you know, we have a lot of needs, it's special education, so we have salaries of special education staff, contracted services, supplies, equipment, summer programming, training, the tuitions, testing, and transportation. So the next slide talks about, a little bit about grants. So we did get a little bit more this year compared to last year for our big grant, the IGEA. We have $757,588. We use that grant to fund three paraprofessional salaries, to fund training, to fund partial salaries of some of our SISPs, which is specialized instructional support personnel, some people call them RSP-related service providers, or more commonly known as physical therapist, occupation purpose, physical therapists. So that are, we're able to use a piece of the grant or a piece of their salary for homeschool students that may be getting services through that. Supplies for testing instruction, contracted services. So I don't know if you recall, a few years ago, we, our teacher of the visually impaired, retired, she taught her teachers, we, we were never able to find anyone, so we contacted with the parent school guidelines, we have someone through that. We also contacted with South Shore Rheology for like those real specialized services that we don't have. We use a piece of the grant for tuitions and transportation for out-of-district as well. Then we have a similar grant, but on a much lower scale, for students with disabilities that is called the 262, and that is for students aged 25. So we got a whopping $28 more this year compared to last year. And that grant typically covers the salary of one paraprofessional and some supplies for the ECC program. Talked a little bit about the 274 Grant. Last year we had, you know, more than twice as much, but it was a new, you know, a new IP format, but this year we got $10,000 and we're using that for training. We had a great presenter, a Mark JBT, that we paid for out of script. Circuit Breaker, so basically, you know, I'd like to have this little slide about the electrical safety device, because the parallel is you may have a student who was into the district and they have a very expensive state tuition that you weren't budgeting for, it could be $500,000. So the Circuit Breaker kind of allows us to kind of continue to operate without shortening out anything else or damaging the whole system. So the way it works is that we take the foundation budget amount, which is $12,930.25, they multiply that by four, and then that is like the threshold. So the state feels like, okay, if you are paying more than that special education cost per pupil, or, you know, a specific student, it's not, you know, in total, then we will fund a percentage of your excess cost over that. So they kind of not really expect us to spend $51,721, but they're like, okay, that's on you. And then whatever is remaining would be a percentage. So if the tuition costs $100,000, you subtract the four times foundation amount, and then whatever that amount, whatever percentage they give us, typically 75%, some use at 69%, then that cost remains. So we can use this for in-district students, however, it's really more and more difficult to do that given the high threshold amount. When I first started doing Circuit Breaker, I think the foundation amount was like $4,900 or something like, so it's just gone exponentially up. Last year I tried to claim 45 students, I only was, we only had 30 eligible. So I try to like do as much as I can to see who's eligible, but typically it is the students in the out-of-district programs. We also can, can get reimbursement for the transportation, but that is a lower, a much lower degree. So right now I'm in the thick of Circuit Breaker extraordinary relief, so if by chance we spent so much money this year than we did last year, it's gonna have to be like at least 125% more than last year, they could give us additional money. I think that happened once in my career, it wasn't Situate, you're welcome. But I don't think we're gonna get it, but I like to get ahead of, you know, ahead of it, so that we can see where we're at. Situate does it right with our business management here, where we don't, once we get the money in, we're not spending it right away. So the way it works is, like the funding that we were awarded in September of this year was based on last year's tuitions, but we don't spend the money this year, we spend the money next year, so that can be in the budget. So I've been in some districts where they didn't have that, and so they were kind of like hand-to-mouth. And then if you get into a situation where you don't, you know, there's unexpected costs, then it's kind of, can be from that. So it's a little complicated, but of course, like, you know, DESI changed their system, so I got to learn about that during my, my vacation, watched the YouTube videos on how to do Circuit Breaker reimbursement all over again. This is a slide that just kind of encapsulates the last six years of where we're at. So you can see, you know, the number of students that were eligible ranged from 29 to 34. The reimbursement percentage, if you look at the second to last column, you can see that changes. So we were able to start claiming for transportation in 2022, and at that point, in '23, we got 75%. Last year we only got 59% of the transportation costs, and then last year we got only 44%. So I was expecting a little bit more money back, but because of the lower cost of transportation, I think all districts are spending a lot more on transportation, costs are going out everywhere, so the state only has so much money, and then they try to, they do this formula to provide the support. So our total reimbursement any given year since 2019 is ranged from $1,063,000 to almost $2 million in '24. It's okay when you're not getting back a lot, because you're probably not spending a lot, so it just depends, but it is based on per student. But it is based on per student, um so you could still spend more, but if you have a lot of students and their programs are less, you might not get as much. I know, it's explains, I do like, I do like that, though, I like, you know, you're talking about circuit breakers. Any questions?
I have just a general question, I guess this is a comment too. I actually, a couple of meetings ago, I was responsible for calling the um uh the O D R, O D R.
Oh, yeah, O S D.
O S D, O S D. And um I did call them, I didn't leave a message, but I did happen to speak today to uh our state representative, Patrick Kearney. And um the the real issue here, and Michelle, I mean, this is, this is, I love this stuff too, I appreciate all this, but the real issue is the increase in the cost of uh of out of district placement. So what we're trying to figure out, when Patrick was going to a um, I don't know, some sort of budget presentation out at U S A M H R today about the state budget. So we talked a lot about out of district placements and how these um providers are getting the approvals for such an increase in their tuition. So we are, well collectively, Patrick and I are working on an answer, and how can they reasonably approve all of these like fifteen or twenty percent tuition in increases? So we're working on that. I think that um that that's all relative to what you're doing here, Michelle, I mean, it's great, I mean, I think the number of students is important to kind of see how many, roughly thirty a year, but you can see that our expenses have just gone up dramatically, with the exception of twenty four to twenty five. Um but I know that there are fifteen percent approvals out there for next fiscal year. So assuming these thirty students remain, which is a big assumption, that, you know, our expenses are gonna go up additionally, or twenty to twenty six, I would say.
Yeah, it could, and this is only, I mean, our expenses are more than this. These are only based on the students that were claimed. Um so if we had a student um previously at the collaborative and they didn't attend a summer program, the tuition was so low, it didn't even make that threshold. So their prices are going up, but it still is less expensive than a private school. And, you know, the collaborative is like our collaborative, it's local, we wanna support them. But um, yeah, I think.
And when you include expenses, is it, it's everything related to the services for that student?
So the way the the file works is that it's like, like I mentioned, I have the um teacher of the visually impaired. The state assigns a cost per hour. So they don't care how much we spend on it, they don't care how much purpose for the blind charges us, but they're like, alright, a teacher of visually impaired, eighty five dollars an hour. We might be spending a hundred and thirty an hour, so like we only, they have this formula that they, and 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 the IP has to specifically, is it one on one, is it small group? So if it's a small group, then the the actual rate is divided by, you know, four kids, so it depends.
But you can't assign that service to that student to to increase the cost.
Yeah, I I put them in, but they have to basically equal that fifty one thousand threshold.
Right.
So that's where it's challenging, I think it used to be easier to do it when the threshold was lower.
Yeah. Well, what other type of services like this, P T, O T, those sort, those all go towards the cost to provide services to a student?
Everything. Yeah. Yeah, and special ed teacher, um the summer program, the hours, um some, you know, and then the tran- uh the transportation, we don't get reimbursed unless they're out of district, they don't allow us to do the in district transportation. So I try, um I try and like, you know, sometimes I get like forty four dollars for one student, it's like, yes. But um but it's mostly these out of district programs.
Okay. I appreciate it, again, I'm I'm gonna come report back to the committee and I did invite Patrick. He said in May, one of our May meetings, we'll talk, we'll put down for future, if he wants to, if he be willing to come and talk to us about the state budget and potential impacts. Again, we're kind of initial phases of trying to figure out how these out of district placements get approved for such large increases. We just accept it, right? We just have to, whatever the, whatever DESI or O S D approves, we have to accept it.
We have to fund it, yeah.
It can be changed mid-year too, like, oh, it's going up.
Yes.
Budgeting is almost like impossible.
Right, I think we had the fourteen percent, was it, was last year, we were worried. But yeah, they can, they can do a price increase.
Yeah.
Some of, and some of these programs don't even have like speech and language therapists. So then we're still funding speech and language therapy outside of that, so. But there aren't enough spots either in some of these programs, so we're kind of, if the student really needs it, like you said, kind of stuck, we have to do it. And I think the costs are going up because it's been difficult for those programs to hire. Um and they can't be as competitive with public school um for hiring.
But also, it seems like some of these programs, they recognize that their tuition increase is seventy five percent funded by circuit breaker. So they're like, oh, we know that we're not really affecting the district that much, we're affecting the state. So the state budget is basically reimbursing three quarters of every dollar of their increase in tuition.
After the fifty one thousand.
Right? Right, but you're, if you're paying three hundred thousand for, you know, every dollar you increase it, seventy five cents is coming from the state.
Right. Right. Yeah. The way that O S D approves the programs though, um they have to put it in their budget and what their salaries are, what what their staffing are, and then the state will give them that number back. I don't know if the executives at the top are making a little bit more money than the people boots on the ground working with the kids. I mean, that much more money, obviously they are making more money, but I don't know where the disconnect is, um.
I'm gonna have to catch the law.
Yeah, because we've been asking that forever, years.
It's affecting every.
Because of mask recently.
It's affecting every district, every town right now. I mean, everyone is requesting an override, they all point back to part of it, one of the reasons is out of district locations, and we know they're still expensive.
Yeah.
So we're, I don't know if anything's gonna come of it, but just to learn more about how these price increases get approved and how we can potentially prepare for them.
Right. Yeah, and I, you know, I wanna give credit to all of our staff and our families for, you know, we're we're kind of like building our programs within the district.
Yeah.
And our people are competent and certified and um that doesn't work for every student, but wherever possible, we're trying to find, you know, the least restrictive environment for students and help these these students to grow. And then they don't have to get on a bus, you know, or live somewhere else, but that's not always possible for all students, but um where we can, we're doing that. Um so, did you, no, I'm good. Um so I wanna kind of shift gears a little bit, we just had our integrated monitoring review. So this has been called many things over the last twenty years, it what used to be coordinated program review, the C P R, then it was T F M, to your focus monitoring. Now it is integrated monitoring review, the I M R. But basically DESI comes out um every three years and they look at um criterions for special education and in civil rights. Um we were in group B, which is predominantly civil rights. Um about three years ago, we were group A and that was mostly special ed. So um they look at their compliance to see, are we fully im- implementing these standards and these laws in these areas? And um obviously it's based on evidence, so we need to show the evidence. But um we had um eleven special education criteria and eighteen civil rights. Um we started um and again, thank um a shout out to Julie Ward, um who helped with scheduling interviews and um uploading documents. Of course, her assistant superintendent, it was like the first week, it's like, hey, the self-assessment is due. So um because it was heavy civil rights, which is his part of it and my part of it is specialized, but we we work great together and we help each other out and everything. But the first part was the self-assessment, we had to upload um all these documents. I stopped counting it, a hundred and seven separate documents. That included my two hundred and thirty nine page special ed policy and procedure manual, which I wrote during Christmas vacation. But they they wanna make sure that we're um implementing these aspects of the laws. So that was the first part, was uploading the documents, the policies that we already had, et cetera. Um show showing the evidence of we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Then they came out, they did a site visit at the end of January, they went to each school, there was two representatives from the department. And they were looking to make sure that the classrooms were safe, that they were accessible, that um special education classrooms were comparable to facilities um for general ed, et cetera. Um and so that was a day. Then we had um a survey of special ed parents, so they sent a survey out to eight hundred parents. They got fifty one back and they thought that was good. Um so I guess we're better than um some districts or most districts in the state. Um and then they had interviews with selected staff, so that happened in the beginning of February. And um they interviewed me, Ryan, um principals, special ed team chair, a parent of a special ed student who was also on the C P A C board, um uh and a general ed teacher. And they just, you know, so they're triangulating the data, right? They're getting the documents, they're observing and then they're uh the survey and then the interviews. Um in terms of some of these criterias, like I can just give you some examples. So for civil rights, um our procedures for in-school suspension, uh are we doing alternative remedies to uh sus- suspension um outside of school, bullying intervention of prevention? Are we providing an annual notification of non-discrimination? Um are we uh following all the requirements related to physical restraint, including training and uh behavior support policies? Are we, do we have evidence that we've trained our staff confidentiality, student records? Um confidentiality, um I'm sorry, of um the responsibilities that we've got related to civil rights, um et cetera. Um are we translating for families that do not know how to read English? Um are we making sure that our students who are considered English language learners have full access to programs and as well as students with disabilities? So those were all, that's part of the civil rights, that was all great, that was fine. Um special education, are we looking at child find? Are we evaluating students that we suspect they have a disability? Um are we evaluating our specialized programs? Are we doing assessments um before we are in around assistive technology, um those kind of things? They looked at teacher licenses, our teacher's license, they looked at student handbooks, um floor plans and et cetera. So it was um, it was quite a lot. Um but we did really, really well, in my opinion. Um they released their preliminary report, March thirteenth, like I said, before this went to press or after, I guess after I created this PowerPoint, we just got our final review, our final report. Um so we've had lots of like debrief meetings with them as well. So one of the things I liked that they said is that they observed lots of positive interactions between staff and students when they were, you know, visiting in the programs. They um they made some recommendations that were like non-binding, but um at the high school, we have a wing where we tend to have a lot of our special education academic strategies, support classes. You know, maybe switch out one of those with a with a gen ed teacher, so they're not all like on the same wing. At Heatherly and Cushing School, because we are using like big classrooms, the regular sized classrooms, we sometimes have multiple groups going on at the same time. We might have the reading um interventionist or reading specialist working with a couple of kids, we might have a special ed teacher working with a small group. So they didn't love that, even though they were partitioned, but they understand, once the new school is built, this will address it. Um the other issue that they thought we should focus on is recruiting more C P A C board members. So P S A, if anybody wants to be on the board, please send me an email. Um as I mentioned, we have one um parent who is on the board. Um we do still hold C P A C meetings, but they thought it would be great if we gather more and I think it'll be great too, so we'll keep trying. Um for the survey, they sent out to parents, like I said, um fifty one were received. Not everybody answered all the questions in the survey. But um for the most part, Henry, our representative at DESI, felt it was very positive and that most parents felt, and you can see like the numbers, so thirty out of thirty five parents felt welcomed and part of the school team. Most parents felt their special ed teams valued their input during the I P process. They felt that support services are provided in a way to meet student needs and that the evaluation process adequately addresses um the concerns. So that was all good. So the findings, like the final report, basically we um fully implemented with eleven out of eleven of the criterion for criteria for special ed, we fully implemented sixteen out of eighteen for civil rights. So two minor issue, again, it doesn't mean that we're not uh upholding civil rights, it's just we need some more evidence, right? So one um issue was um the code of conduct in the handbooks, it needs to be, um I guess the middle school was good, but the high school and elementary needs to be improved by school committee, so that will be coming to your desk.
This spring.
Okay, um coming soon. And then the other thing is they wanted to make sure that we have evidence that teachers and administrators are reviewing curriculum to make sure there's no bias or stereotype related to uh sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, race, ethnicity, et cetera. So um I know that with the equity on it, you know, they've, everybody's been working on this and they they are going to try to identify a a tool to kind of do this, but this is the work that they want us to then come back and say, yes, we did review this curriculum, um we did not find this, or we did find this and we're not gonna use this, or we're gonna change whatever. But that will be um written up in a corrective action plan and um it'll be like steps, we're gonna be doing these steps. And then um they'll be reviewed and there's like progress reports where we're going. Um and I would think probably in a year, we'll be done with that. Then we got a couple of years and then group A, special education, comes back with another T F M, C P R, I M R, whatever it it might be. But overall, it was real, I thought it was really, really positive. They were, they were, you know, pretty happy. It will be like a a document that um will be like uh public, um I think as well, on the website at some point, um on DESI's website. So um, any questions?
Oh, I think it's great.
Yeah.
It sounds like a, it sounds like a very positive alpha combo, and I know that it was labor intensive for you guys to go through, so. It's great, it's great to see this perspective and see that it appears like we're doing really well in our special ed department. I guess one question, I'm not sure we can quantify, is uh I know that we have a number of I E Ps. Do we have evidence or anything to show that we have some students who are um meeting their goals and objectives and are no longer on I E P versus students who are, who are not on I E P but are now are on I E P? I don't know if we get that, I'm just be curious if there was anything made up. I'm sure, I'm sure just a couple of students on either part of the spectrum, but I was just curious.
Right. Um so I I can probably find some data, we we track like number of about, you know, the evaluations and the outcome, so we're always getting, you know, more initials. I would, I think we're we're um terminating I E Ps less frequently than we're, and the numbers show that too, right? Than we're putting on an I E P. I mean, students naturally go off an I E P when they, you know, graduate high school or turn twenty two. Um I do know that um the school teams also make referrals, so that's part of child find. So when they go through the instructional support team process, um and with N T S S, they're they're looking to um frequently progress monitor of students and how they're doing and then if they're not making the progress, they make the referrals. And usually not all, but most of those are found to have disability, which makes sense. Um sometimes parents will make a referral and, you know, want to know, you know, if a student has a disability. Those are not as frequently found eligible, but some are. We wanna catch, we do, and we wanna catch the students earlier, um before the parents are like concerned about that. But um in terms of like the progress on their goals, you know, the goals are written every year and they're kind of upped a little bit, so.
Yeah.
Um I don't know, I can probably ask.
No, I was, I was, it just, I'm just curious, I think that ultimately, you know, I would say that in most cases, if if you're, if our students can reach their goals and ultimately, I don't know what the word is, terminate their I E P, then I think that everyone's done a great job and the student's probably very you know, positive about their experience, just be curi- I I don't need to know that, I'm just something to, something to think about, I would say, just to see a bit.
Yes.
But it does happen.
Yeah.
And sometimes we've had that situation where we're celebrating and the and the student no longer really, you know, presents with a disability, but it can be a safety net too, and parents don't wanna let it go.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Because like, it's sort of like, well, would they make the progress without the special services?
Right.
So then I'll, sometimes we call what it's a state put I P, which is, okay, they're still on the I P for those protections. Um. But, you know, I think especially at high school, it makes sense to transition more to a five oh four accommodation plan because once the students leave, you know, schools, they're not gonna be on an IEP. They might, they may have a five oh four plan, and that's sort of a logical transition plan.
I have a question about that, actually. I was wondering if students in five oh fours are under your purview?
No.
No, they're not?
Tammy, remember?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is just students' IEPs.
Okay, so the data you had at the beginning, so I, I was just thinking a little bit about, like some students with ADHD, for example, have an IEP, so those have a five oh four. And so you were noting that that was a fairly large group of kids. And I feel like that's something that I tend to hear about from parents sometimes, like who are worried about, you know, movement rates and things like that. So I was just curious, like, how do we know how many kids is impacting?
You know, well Tammy probably has the stats on the five oh fours, so we can get them. But, but, so students on IEPs are protected under section five oh four, which is like the anti-discrimination, making sure we're right access. Students on five oh four plans typically just have accommodations. They don't need that specially designed instruction or specialized services, so they might not need a specialized teacher, but they need extended time to do their, you know, assessments. So usually, you know, the five oh four accommodations are in the IEP.
Yeah.
So there's not any top both, sometimes parents like top both. And then if they're making progress, maybe they don't need the specially designed instruction, but they still need accommodations, then we could go to the five oh four. So it can kind of go either way.
Yeah.
Or students on a five oh four might not be making the progress with just accommodations and then we're looking at other things. I think some districts, they don't typically pick up as much ADHD maybe as, as we do.
Yeah.
But it's okay because that also can be correlated with needing difficulties.
Yeah.
So.
I was also curious about, you were saying this specific learning disabilities and how dyslexia is a larger, you know, portion of that. I was wondering if you're noticing yet any difference in the number of kids that are being referred for special ed with more training on science of reading and more focus on that in the early grades that we've been kind of doing in the general ed classroom?
I think since, so I've been here since 2020 and I think that we are picking the kids up earlier.
Earlier, yeah.
Which hopefully will have a better outcome later. So what was happening when I was first here, a lot of kids with dyslexia, they were making progress in elementary, they went to middle school and they kind of hit the wall because they weren't able to decode these unfamiliar words, read text fluently, it was starting to impact their academics. In elementary, kids are making progress because they have their teacher and there's like a lot of things built in already for them. So I think we're seeing that sooner. And then, you know, we had the pandemic.
Yeah.
And then there's all that, that happens with that. And I think kids weren't exposed to like just, you know, everyday things, like the young kids, right? And so currently our kindergarteners were one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that has a little impact. But we did used to have like a specialized reading consultant at the middle school. And I'm like, no, 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 let's like bring, let's bring this down to elementary. So we have a lot more teachers now, specialized teachers trained in Horton Gillingham technology. And I think that the foundations and all the work that Megan Gregory's done is wonderful and we're, we're catching them.
Yeah, that's great.
So, and intervening, obviously, that we're able to catch them. So I think it's kind of like a very integrated approach.
Right.
We're also so lucky to have all these reading specialists as well.
Yeah.
In situat, so whether or not they're on an IEP, they're still getting this help and support.
That's great, I'm really happy to hear about that change because I think, you know, what I understand about dyslexia is just, you know, how important it is to intervene early and the earlier the better and the better chances that that child will have, you know, future service, that's awesome.
Right, and it's hard to diagnose, like too early too. So we wanna make sure that we're doing that for all kids.
Mm-hmm.
And then, like I said, we do have that developmental delay category if we need it.
Yeah, I know, I, I think I'm, I'm pretty happy with fully.
I have just one more question.
Sure.
I was just curious if the, if the IMR like review would be available to certain parents who wanted to maybe look at it?
I think we're gonna share with school community, right, the final?
Or if there's like some version of it that would be shared. I just thought, some people might be interested in getting more of that.
I think the plan was like anything to have the presentation tonight so they can hear it too, but then read it sometimes when you send a document like that out when people just don't understand. So yes, but it's a great question, so we'll, we'll send that out to all of you and then have it posted for our part of this presentation with the, for the public to take a look at. Because, you know, just to follow up on that, thank you Dr. Boebert and Ryan. You know, this is probably the most positive DESI meeting I've ever been in, like any meeting, because you usually get beat up pretty good and it's, and it's okay because that's what you want. They took, did you see all the amount of work they do to take a microscope to something this important? And, you know, and Ryan was thrown into the fire and our principals did a really great job. Ultimately, it comes down to the boots on the ground, our teachers, our special education teachers, our gen ed teachers, our professionals, everybody. This is really a credit to our whole district, the people that work with our kids and the families too, the kids obviously, for the, the feedback when I was in the, we went to a pre-comprehensive breakdown of their findings in a meeting. And again, it was, started off positive and I go, okay, they start with the nice stuff and then we get, and you saw some of the things that we have to improve on, which is great to see because I think that's what Dr. Boebert and the team have done in the past. We've had these, we get right on this and we take it seriously and then we fix it, we improve it. But we also keep going on things we need to improve on. So this was, it's a really good report and I want to, you know, also thank the committee for your support in all we do and in funding the programs and supporting them because this is something we celebrate, so we'll make sure we share it in the presentation tonight because it is good news, also room for improvement. But certainly the way that the DESI representative spoke about it, he was like, you know, beaming about it, his apparent reports, what he saw. When he went into ILC, PLC, he's one of the things I wanted them to look at was the Jenkins program and make sure that everything was safe in there, made some renovations in there. Dr. Boebert's also done some other things to encourage more kids to stay in district, which they looked at too, and they were all thumbs up, safe, productive, good. So it's just really nice to hear that we've got a few things to improve on and it was all a very positive overall report, so. I want to just thank everybody for that.
Thank you.
We have our teaching and learning update.
This runs up?
Thank you for having me here tonight, I'm really excited to be here. I've been wanting to provide some information to the school community for, for a while now just in terms of our goals, our objectives, a lot of data points that I've shared with you at the presentation. So I have my notes, I have my speech, I have everything, I'm ready to go. So thank you for having me. And I just want to start by talking about. So I shared with you in your pockets a list of our goals and objectives for the year and I wanted to talk, show you how they tie into the strategic objectives. So when we look at counseling, there are three domains in school counseling. There's an academic domain, there's a social and emotional domain, and then there's the college and career readiness domain. And we have our goals tied around all three of those domains. In terms of academic support, I will say that the MTSS process at Gates has been a wonderful change for our school counselors. Our school counselors are the ones that are doing the, this whole child, the interviews for the parents and the caregivers. They're providing information to the MTSS teams. They're also doing this data portion with the students as well. And that's been super helpful for, for our team. They're really leading the way in terms of our MTSS and I look forward to learning and sharing their best practices when we bring it up to the high school and also when we bring it down to the elementary school. Another important academic piece of data is regarding our school attendance. So oftentimes the counselors are the first line of contact with students who have unverified absences. So oftentimes we'll be calling home saying, you know, we're wondering why Johnny isn't here today, trying to help interview before it becomes a major problem. For example, I had a student who was struggling with coming to school. And I was talking to his, talking to him on the phone, just trying to get him in. He was saying that he had a hard time coming in because he didn't have any friends in gym. Well, let's talk about that, let's get you in, let's get you into the building. We noticed that pattern was on the days that he had visette, he often was not, was not in school. So we tried to put together some combinations for him in the, in the visette setting to allow him to access the day. And I, and his attendance has improved as a result of that. I know attendance is a big concern and a big issue for situat, but also for a lot of other schools as well. And then in terms of academic planning, we provide academic planning for our students in terms of scheduling, in terms of providing them with their courses of study moving forward through the, through the school years. And then in terms of our social and emotional development, I feel like the counselors do a nice job, championing the SED program for the district. At the high school, we provide, we co-teach a science of suicide, which is a research-based program for, for students with the health teachers, the tenth grade health teachers, so we co-facilitate those classes. And what's nice about those pro, that program is at the end of the program, we provide a, an avenue for students to say that they want to immediately follow up with a counselor. So that way the student's getting the information that they need regarding suicide awareness. But also if they have a concern about themselves or about a friend, we have, we give them almost like an exit ticket at the end to be able to provide them with that support of their counselor. And then also we provide the mandated suicide prevention training for the district, for all staff, district by the counselors, the school counselors and the school adjustment counselors and I provide that mandated suicide prevention training. We've been doing that for the past few years. And we do that through faculty, through faculty meetings and we also provide them with an opportunity to provide a specific feedback what was helpful about the presentation, what worked, if we need it. In terms of social and emotional, the Character Strong curriculum, we provide lessons to the students, especially at the elementary schools. The counselors do a really good job with providing that, that tier one support for students. At the secondary level, most of our counselors will use Character Strong in their work with their, with their small groups, with their targeted tier two and tier three groups. We do run a number of groups throughout the district. We have self-esteem groups running, we have self-control groups. We have a very popular, unfortunately popular grief group that we've been running. At the high school, the middle school has one and also at the elementary schools, we teach skills on anxiety, mental health. We also have executive functioning skills, executive functioning groups that we run to support students at the tier two and tier three levels. As part of some of the information that we get from the MTSS and the HSA and other early warning signs, we would like to make a referral to outside therapists, community resources and agencies. We may provide individual counseling to students depending on what their needs are. And we also run character events. Yeah, events at the elementary, middle and high school for parents and caregivers. And then I just added the perfect peer program in Cushing and the Beacon program, which is a mentor, both of them are mentoring programs at the elementary schools that was put forth as a result of the HSA data showing that school bonding was an issue for some of our students. So, so they created a program for students to be hooked up with adult mentors. And at the high school, their mentors, their students are hooked into upperclassmen. So we have students that are like freshman students that are paired up here with students that are almost like a best buddy type program. So I thought that was really helpful to hear. And we're really making nice strides in our college and career readiness path with the implementation of MYCAP beneath the pathway this year. We rolled it up for grade six, seventh, eighth, ninth and tenth grade. And there's also, parents can also go into the, the pathway and use that information to help them dive to two different post-secondary options, but also career paths. That's been something that we've been working on as a school and as a department. The Gates has a wonderful career day that they do in November where they bring in professionals from the outside. That's super robust, kids love it, they always remember. Oh, I remember I had the photographer from, the Boston Herald was there. They tend to remember that because it's really impactful for students to see, to see the adults in the community and how they can make those connections between what they want to do, what their skills and objectives are with what they, what was available in the outreach community. We also provide the ASGAP to students at the high school level. The ASGAP is a armed services vocational assessment battery. It's the assessment battery that students who need to take to become part of the, to go into the military. But it also has a wonderful career exploration tool, so some students will use it just for that. We've introduced SWOOR this year, which is our college planning exploration tool to upperclassmen. We've had nothing but positive feedback on that program. In the past, we've used Naviance, but SWOOR, we found is more user friendly and there's a parent portal, a parent account with SWOOR. And we're finding that students are really, like, they get a lot better. Another piece that we've added this year was an early post-secondary planning event as a result of feedback that we had from parents, from our junior and senior parents that they were wishing that they had that information earlier and earlier. So we created, you know, a post-secondary planning event for students and parents, usually for parents. And the, the survey response was quite positive, so I was super happy about that. And we also have college breakfast at Secment. This spring, we're having a college essay panel workshop with college admissions, college admissions officers. And we're also looking into having a trades and unions panel to kind of diversify some of the work that we do for, not just for college, but also for career. And that brings me to my next goals around communication, community partnerships. As you know, this has been a, at the forefront of my work over the past couple of years in terms of making sure that we update our school counseling website, that we update it regularly. I've been sending more and more posts to the situat app and I've been really analyzing the caregivers' student feedback to improve our practice. So whenever we have an event, we ask them, you know, do you feel you're better prepared to start? What was helpful, what wasn't helpful? Instead of just taking that information and putting it in a file someplace, we sit down as a counseling team and say, okay, what can we do better next time? How can we improve our practice? And that's been really helpful, that's how we ended up with our early college planning event that we just had. And then we also, this new this year is we are sending out periodic newsletters from the high school, which I think has been, again, another piece of, trying to take a look at the information that we send out in posts, have it all in one spot for students and parents to reference in terms of upcoming events and things that we are doing in the community partner. And then the last goal touches upon the finance, facilities, personnel and technology plan. Our school adjustment counselors have provided consultation with the emergency operations planning team regarding the behavioral health supports. They're also looking to ensure consistency of practice of crisis team protocols in the district through consultation and collaboration with the EOP team and the school-based crisis teams. A lot of that work is being headed by our school adjustment counselors on staff. And finally, we have been participating, last week participated in a district professional development training with K-12 counselors along with district administrators and other staff to increase our work knowledge on threat assessment. to increase our work knowledge on threat assessment and our threat assessment, safety protocols, procedures and practices. That's an overview of all the touch, some of the, most of all the touch points. I didn't even talk about five oh fours, I knew you were asking Dr. Boebert about that. Captain, share any information about that. But now I just want to switch over, just in the interest of time, some information that I've been collecting since I, since I started this role was about college application trends. Back in the day, we probably had about thirty percent of our students applying under an early admission program. For now, we have a majority of our students apply early. And early applications would be like early action program or early decision program or priority. They have restricted early action. The colleges are trying to have really expanded their ways of getting students to apply earlier to their schools. And students have really taken, taken to that. So we've had to really shift our post-secondary planning. We've had to shift our scope and sequence. For example, when we used to, when we met with our juniors, we usually meet with them in April, their junior year. Well, now we're doing it in December. So we have to push every, we have to move everything back. And one of the implications for that is beginning of the year, because so many students are applying early, they want to meet with their counselors early. That's been a little bit of a challenge for students, for counselors, because when they come in, like the first day of school, we're dealing with schedule changes and things like that. And they're like, they're ready to like apply, and we need another day. So we really appreciate the fact that school has done it before Labor Day. Those those simple days really do make a difference for some of our students. And some of the work that we're doing is doing, can we do, like, we added a summer send-off for juniors. So that way, then they leave for the summer, they have a good idea of what they need to do. So they can work on those and those tasks over the summer. Where, you know, twenty, ten, fifteen years ago, the application process was so different. And we'd be working with students up until like December break. But now that everything's done, November first, majority of our students are applying under that program. So we've been trying to keep up with that. Another piece of data, as you know, I'm the AP coordinator for the district. So I've been collecting this data over the past fifteen, sixteen years. And as you know, we've had an increase in the number of students taking AP exams. We also have an increase in the number of subjects that we've been offering and the number of students requiring accommodations. So, which is great because we are diversifying the student population who can access college-level work. But because we have a significant increase in the number of students requiring accommodations, it's placed a lot more challenge for the counseling department and the department chairs to provide the proctoring for those, for those exams. It's not just like throw them all in a room. They have some students need extended time, some students need extra breaks. So it's like, it's, it's a lot to manage. We do it well, but it is a point of a challenge for us, especially in the spring. Students are really wanting to talk to us about post-secondary options and we're getting pulled to proctor AP exams. And then just the sheer number of AP classes that we offer. When I started, it was like ten to twelve, and now we have up to twenty-two AP offerings. So that comes with challenges and obstacles. And I'm just going to flip gears, switch gears right now, just talk for a second about the mental health needs of our students. As you know, the mental health needs of our students continue to be a concern for us. The number of students with anxiety disorders and depression continues to be a challenge for, for us as a district. I did share the youth risk behavior data that the, that the wellness department puts together. And you will see in the 2024, we've had a slight decrease in mental health. Students failing tests, hopeless or having a plan to hurt themselves. But it's still something that we are, it's still alarming. Four percent is much too many, right? So if you take a look at the next slide, these, this, this information is based on the number of hospitalizations, partial days, eating disorders or substance use days for Cituit High School that we've been collecting over the past ten years. I will say our Cituit High School Lighthouse Program, which is our traditional learning center, that's staffed by a school psychologist, a school adjustment counselor and a paraprofessional, has been, has been really helpful for our students. Last year, we serviced, I think we serviced over twenty students and ninety-five percent of them were able to reintegrate back into their courses by the end of their time in the Lighthouse Program. The other piece that I oversee is home hospital tutoring. And I will say that, just making a note, that educational technology has really helped with providing tutoring support for students because everything is available online. Students could access their teachers at regular hours as opposed to providing that one-on-one district tutoring. So I feel like that's a positive change with education technology. And just in terms of making sure that the students get what they need when they return. Finally, looking forward, next steps. As I mentioned, we would like to expand opportunities for students to explore alternatives to four-year college, trades, unions, military gap, those bridge programs. Not only just talking about them, but bringing them in for students to have. Oh, I didn't know that there was a, there was a gap in the program that I could participate in. Instead of just talking about it, but actually bringing in professionals from the community to provide that information to the students and families. And then the second next step that we're going to be taking a look at is how we support MTSS efforts and the whole type of process district-wide, especially at the high school level, and share the best practices from the GAMES model. And then finally, this is a bigger goal, I guess you could say, is examining our district practices and policies regarding graduation requirements and things to ensure that the students' courses of study and programming are optimized. What I mean by that is we have the project lead the way. We have the AP capstone, we have the business pathway, we have the environmental stewardship pathway. We have all these wonderful opportunities for students, but we also have to take into consideration what they need to do to have, to graduate and earn that diploma. So it's just something to kind of think about in terms of when we're providing all this information to students and parents, making sure that they have all the information to make the right decision for their students. So I'm out of breath.
Fair enough.
Does Mary answer any questions?
I have one, you had referenced the increasing number of students with anxiety disorder of some type. And I was just curious if you could talk a little bit more about that, like what you're seeing, what you feel is effective that we're doing or what you kind of think is on the horizon.
Sure. Sure, so I actually pulled some data from the William James Interface Referral Program. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that.
I do know.
So that's where people in the community can call and get a ref, a ref referral to mental health support. And there has been the overwhelming, they categorize advice by issue. And anxiety was number one. We have seen an increase in the number of students requiring five oh four plans for anxiety and depression-related impairments. So that has been a challenge for school counselors, both in terms of the number of five oh fours, because we are also the five oh four chairs. We don't have a team chair for five oh four. So they're pulling all that data together, running through the process, writing the plan, making sure the plans are being implemented. But we are, have, we have seen an increase in the number of students with anxiety. Our counselors are providing like tier-two supports through, through psychoeducational support groups, one-on-one counseling, referrals to outside counselors, requesting release of information so that the school counselor can speak to the outside therapist to talk about, you know, what are we seeing in school and how can we help support the student in the classroom. But it is something that, especially during COVID, we saw that, you know, back twenty twenty-one, the number of hospitalizations really.
Yeah, it's just something you hear so much about. I was just thinking about like, kind of back to the MTSS model and how, like what it would look like to kind of include supports for kids differently outside of, you know, whether or not they have a five oh four, I guess, or sort of, you know, we're at that point yet or.
Yeah, so I know in Gates, like they have, our school adjustment counselor will run, has run and is running certain groups based on the data from the MTSS, from the teams.
Yeah.
Whether it's a grief group or anxiety group or DVT, which is live on, regardless. She is, she is trained in that as well. And so there is some movement in that.
Well, English Generation.
Yes.
I was wondering, I know we do pair in elementary and middle. Do you collect any data? I'm just looking at that risk, youth risky behavior data. Do you collect that at the middle school? Like, do we have a sense of, I mean, there's stuff about suicide ideation and sadness. And I'm just wondering if that's collected. I know this is partly based on what the federal, like the federal data is collecting, but I'm just wondering if that's something, I mean, I just worry unfortunately that I think it's not just a symptom of the high school.
Oh, right.
This happens earlier, so I wonder if it's early intervention, like what that would look like to be. Just, again, just a thought.
Yeah, that's information that I, that the counselors do have, so I can pull that information together.
The other thing, just if, for folks watching who watch the recording, just being mindful that, this data is great, let me just say that first, but just in interpreting this table, you just have to be mindful that the N for students changes year to year. So making sure that like sixteen percent in like twenty seventeen and sixteen percent in twenty twenty-two is actually a different number of students. So just drilling down, just being mindful of that. But I just did some numbers just to see where we actually are.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yep.
I just want to say that I think you run two departments.
Yeah.
That, you know, all you do at the high school and everything that falls under that umbrella is one full-time director's position in and of itself. And running the social emotional wellbeing department for the district is also a full-time job.
Thank you.
I wish we could have two.
They're two completely different functionalities and both are really important and, you know.
Well, plus with the yes and with the data that you're sharing and the question that Maria just asked. I know we're in budget tightness and I'm not saying, but like if it was on a wish list, that would be, you know, something to be able to have someone who could really, not, I mean, you're doing a fantastic job just having more help, right? In a place that feels like it's needed.
Yeah, I agree. It almost feels impossible to get it all, but.
Well, and our parent, I mean, I hear from the community all the time and the feedback, you know, when you send out the surveys, it's super difficult to focus on academics. The reality is like, you can't solely focus on academics if a kid is sitting in a class feeling anxious or won't come to school. I mean, that story you shared of not coming to school because of, so they're missing an entire day because of one period. That's a perfect example of where we can focus on academics all day, but if this kid is being bullied in biz ed, we have to address that, right? And so like, I just appreciate that you brought that story and that both parents hear that. Those are three stories, because I unfortunately think that does happen, right?
Yeah, and I have seen that in terms of like the traditional school counselor role as, you know, used to be like academic and post-secondary, academic, post-secondary. It's changed dramatically because of the mental health needs for our students.
Yeah. I do wonder, Tammy, I feel like the school committee's been asking about attendance data.
Right.
And I wonder, this is the data that like we keep asking to drill down to say like what kinds of absences and like you seem to have your finger on the pulse of what these attendants, right? Like, so I just think the more you can educate us on what you're seeing in the fluctuations, is it, you know, people taking vacation at different times, people taking early vacation? Or is it kids, you know, feeling those barriers because of the bullying? I think we could be an ally if we have more data. I'm not trying to add more work to your plate, but I feel like we've been asking for drilled-down attendance data for a little bit now since it's been on the radar of all of us, so.
And everyone has their own story, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But there, but there's definitely, there are trends. Yeah, there are parents that take their students on vacations.
What percentage of it is that? Because like I think.
Right, well, that's, but that's.
That's the question.
What percentage of it is vacation and what percentage of it is other stuff?
Right.
It would just help.
You have no idea, it's hard to see.
Yeah, and it would help us to say like, is it really chronic absenteeism in like a way that we can control as a district? Or is like, I would love, you know, Michelle, you showed those great graphs and I was thinking it'd be awesome to have a graph that says absenteeism and like fifty percent of it is vacation and thirty percent of it is this. I know you want, I mean, you have the category, so it makes it a little bit easier. We don't have that, we have to sort of make them. But just to know sort of the composition of absenteeism would be, I just think it'd be good data for all of us to have. So do we, are, what, we're worried about attendance, what's the worry? And then what's the problem we're trying to solve, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we just sometimes solve the wrong problem.
Right.
Because, Marika, do the hospitalizations count as absences?
Um, they're medically excused, that's what it's different.
But in, but in, so in Desi's eyes, is that an absence?
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's.
Whenever they're not in school, no matter what the reason.
So that could count towards chronic, like if it's multiple days.
Yeah, I like that idea of breaking it down. If we have a trial, we can do that. We can tell the story of, we do share, I do like that story too. Tammy, that you shared, because I think that we have to do more of that, give some examples of how its impacts kids and, you know, even nationally, educators have been beaten up since, we're a nation that risked in eighty-three. We never really defended it, nobody has nationally. Every new administration beats up educators in education, so it's nothing new. And saying we're thirtieth or one-hundredth of where we are versus other nations, no one ever brings up the social emotional issues that teachers in the front lines dealing with. So I think this, this presentation tonight really shed a light on the amount of work that Tammy and others in her department, multiple tasks, many of which they never have. So those folks, I think the problem with education that I've found in my thirty years is that everyone can comment on it because everyone went to school. Not everyone's been a doctor, right? Or not everyone's built a truck and repaired a truck. But they've all been to school, so they assume that this hasn't changed or that it shouldn't have changed. It so has. So when you hear they're stick to the free hours, I mean, that person has not been in a school or maybe had a child in school or had a child that has had anxiety, depression, suicide ideation, all the things that we deal with on a daily day. So it's not an excuse, it's just the job's complex. And I think sharing this information is helpful and our team's doing a great job on this. The presentation was awesome, Tammy. What I saw in both these presentations tonight is that we're, we're taking a lot of feedback and we're making changes based on what we hear to improve things. And we continue to ask them to want to get better. So that's, I think, the best you can do. And I also like the feedback. I was going to team about attendance, because that is something we're trying to wrap our hands around too. So we'll go and dig down. I know Tammy's team can help us with that, Steve Cross has got some access and I think it would be a team effort to spread out the wealth and get some back.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. Simple and powerful.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right. Vacation, hospital.
For sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kermon, we have history bowl field trip football coming up.
Hi, folks, I'm Richard Kermon. I'm Richard Kermon, I'm a history teacher at the high school and then a faculty advisor for the history bowl club. Just a slight little bit of background, history bowl's been a club for, give or take five years, start during the pandemic. And really looking to give kids an outlet who are not necessarily musicians or athletes. And really, uh, looking to give kids an outlet who are not necessarily musicians or athletes or sports fans, but really celebrate just knowing more than everybody else. And, um, and they, they do it constantly, maybe, uh, every Wednesday and Friday afternoon, my room for at least an hour. This is, um, they compete in tournaments. They're run by the International Academic Competition, which runs both, uh, US tournaments and international tournaments, um, against kids just like them. So what, uh, this year, we participated in the Greater Boston Open and came in second, which was held at a close-y high school back in December. And then we hosted the Massachusetts State Tournament here, uh, in February and fielded four teams and won two of the actual qualifiers to go to nationals. So, uh, based on who could go, and again, this is a somewhat select group and a number of them actually could literally just got home from Switzerland and smiled and went trip. They are, uh, we're, uh, proposing fielding one team of four, but allowing eight kids to go. Because what they can do during the competition is swap out and it gives an opportunity for everybody to participate in a national tournament. And that keeps costs down, um, and just a little bit more bonding as it is. The tournament itself is, um, in Washington DC. It's actually held in Crystal City. It is hosted at the, uh, Crystal Gateway Marriott, which is one metro stop from National Airport. They have contract rooms, so everybody stays there and then the ballrooms are what hosts all the, all the actual competitions. So the tournament, uh, the history bowl, the whole tournament starts on Thursday, the twenty-fourth. Our, uh, kids will participate just in the history bowl piece of it, which is the teen competition park, which is, uh, will, uh, occur on Saturday, starting at eight o'clock. We'll work, uh, they will compete all day long. And then if qualified for playoffs, playoffs will be that evening at seven thirty. And then if they really go far in playoffs, then they would actually finish the tournament after lunch on Sunday. So what we're proposing is, is to, um, fly down, meet at Logan Airport on Friday, the twenty-fifth, morning of, uh, Friday, the twenty-fifth. Uh, we have not made flight reservations, just been in approval of the trip. Meet at Logan, go down there, spend the day, uh, in Washington DC. Tend to the right now, again, a selection of Smithsonian, Smithsonian museums, because this is a group of kids that really wants to go to museums. And, uh, so we would do that ahead of time, check into the tournament when we come back at about dinner time and then start competing on Saturday morning. And compete all day. Also to reduce costs of, of the fact that we hosted the Massachusetts tournament takes, uh, reduces our cost for, uh, the national registration fee. And then if we provide a re-year, which would be me, uh, that takes another about a hundred and fifty dollars off of the cost of that. We get participated in nationals a couple of times before. It's a wonderful event because it is the Crystal, uh, Gateway Marriott, just filled with kids who are dying to show how much they know. And against all these other kids who want them to say that they know more. So that's really about, about this sort of hit in a nutshell. So pending your questions, that's about all I have.
I have a question. I was curious about, I know you haven't booked flights yet, but do you have an estimated cost per student?
Uh, yeah, estimated cost per student is probably about three hundred dollars as it stands right now, pending some, also there are a couple of things in the works to try and, uh, do some fundraising beforehand. Uh, the, the goal of fundraising is to try and reduce the cost per student to as low as we possibly can. We did go to, uh, once, uh, I think the first time we went, it actually has no out-of-pocket expenses, which is pretty wonderful. We have, right now, and I'll check specifically with, uh, later on, I think we have about eight hundred dollars in our account, so we have money that we can throw at it right now. If we do that, that will keep it right about three hundred dollars. The contract room price is a hundred and sixty dollars. And then with four kids in there, that'll keep, keep the, uh, cost well well down.
Um, I have another question. This isn't for you, but more about the policy, the chaperone policy, because you follow the policy. But I was curious if the policy differs. If it's an overnight trip, I see that it's one adult chaperone for every ten students, which makes sense if you're going to like the science museum. But I'm just imagining on a flight and a hotel, if that's still.
What the policy goes.
Yeah, like it just, is that enough? Got one chaperone.
Oh, for eight high schoolers.
Yeah, for eight high schoolers. I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right.
And have you done, been to chaperone before?
Okay, okay. All right.
Just to fill in a lab, because it is a good question. So that's the, that one to ten is obviously the match or a guide. We've fluctuated with that. But we talking, you know, Kermon and him doing it before, take all into consideration where the kids are, you know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
He's comfortable with it and that. And it meets the criteria.
Any other questions? All right. Just a motion.
Yeah.
You're pro field trip? I'm, this sounds very exciting. Somebody needs to say I was over. You want a second chap? I make a motion that the school committee approve the, uh, Washington DC history bowl field trip as presented.
Second.
All in favor.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Have fun. Beat them all.
Thank you.
A little circle like title.
Yeah, right.
Oh, can it be late?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. So I'm here on behalf of the Gates Band and Chorus Program. The group is proposing taking their annual field trip to Canterbury Lake Park on Friday, June thirteenth. Uh, we anticipate about eighty members of the band and chorus attending. Estimated cost per student is sixty dollars at this time, which would cover the cost of admission to the park as well as transportation. Uh, this is a special event for our band and chorus because they first get to, uh, perform for a judge, get some feedback. And then celebrate their efforts as well as the recent performance, uh, which will be critiqued by a judge. I don't know how long they've been going, but for a very, very, very long time. And it's always the highlight of the band and chorus experience at Gates. So this is for seventh and eighth graders, uh, from Friday to thirteenth.
Any questions on this?
No question. I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the seventh and eighth grade band and chorus field trip as presented.
All in favor.
And also?
And also, uh, we're here, I'm here to, uh, seek approval for a donation in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars, uh, from the Situ, Situate Rotary Club for the purchase of four Lego Education Spike Prime Sets, uh, to be used in our Lego Interest-Based Club. Uh, the goal, it's a new club this year. The goal is to grow this program into an after-school club for next year and participate in the first Lego League Challenge, uh, which could very, uh, easily serve as a theater program into our high school robotics program.
Really?
We have a great group, um, of students. We have an awesome new computer science teacher at the middle school, um, who is working with a existing English teacher, both who have a passion for this, uh, and they have found, I think it's thirteen students who this is their life. Their interest-based club, it's obviously happening during the school day, but they've extended it to, I think, five o'clock at night just because they're so into it. And our friends at the Rotary Club, uh, two members are also very passionate about this and have been talking to us for many years now. And finally, all the pieces have come together. So, um, we appreciate it.
I'll have to put it, tell them it's done.
Well, there it is. We appreciate their support, uh.
Awesome.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Rotary Club sixteen hundred dollar donation to the Lego Club as presented.
Second.
All in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Rotary Club.
Very generous.
All right. Um, policy subcommittee.
So we have undertaken review of, uh, three policies related to technology. They were something that we had on the docket starting last year, but we were waiting until, um, our new, uh, director in, in her role, Jackie Frangello. Um, so she really hit the ground running this fall with her team, um, to take a dive into these policies, many of which were quite outdated. And so she did a lot of work to, um, bring them into the current times and also make sure that they were consistent across each other. And I'm actually going to probably ask Ryan Lynch to give a summary of, um, what some of the changes are. He'll do a better job than I will. But Janice and I are also here for the questions. We've had a number of meetings with this, um, since the fall, honestly. And so we've, we've really been reviewed quite a, quite a few times. But I still think Ryan is probably going to do a better job of summarizing, so turn it over.
Thanks, I'll try. Um, the, I, we do really appreciate the work of the technology subcommittee, that these were due, um, to be done. So thank you, uh, to Maria, um, and Janice for spearheading this and then also including Jackie Frangello, Terri Goddard, Tracy Newman, our librarian, Colin Simpson, the middle school librarian, Chris Kuhn, the, um, the network administrator, to all work together because this, these policies have their hands in lots of different places in different departments. So essentially, um, and these policies were reviewed by, uh, Attorney Coleman, um, for legal review prior to us bringing them forward. So, um, inside of your packet, you can see the three policies. They're in a single document. We, we left the highlighted sections red to demonstrate that that was a part that was updated. Basically, um, we needed to include that our district is now one-to-one. We still had language in there talking about kids bringing devices from home, doing MCAS testing on home devices. So that was one change. Number two is that, um, we have third-party software to keep our students safe on Chromebooks, um, in devices, get them on their network. That was not in our policy, but, um, that's something that we use. We wanted to inform families. And lastly, that we needed to ensure aligned with COPA, the Children's Online Protection Act, which, you know, states that anyone under thirteen can't have an account generated for them without parental permission and all those kind of components. So again, thank you to Jackie and the team, um, for updating the student responsible use of technology policy. And, um, and lastly, they also included what, what hap, that students manage their devices and are responsible for them. And if a device is broken, there is a flexible policy, but essentially identifying the costs associated with damage to, to Chromebooks, um, on a, on a scale. If the, they continue to be broken, things like that. So these are some of the changes under IJN DB.
Any questions on that one? We'll move on. Great. Well, I want to.
Yeah, go ahead, Janice.
We want to like touch on the, um, how Jackie was like chasing down the, um, the agreement from parents, you know, when kids were given their device. Parents are supposed to sign something, whatever he signed in return. It was like.
Yeah, I think we just didn't have a system at all, really.
Yeah, so we.
Creating an understanding between families.
Yeah.
And students and us as a district about the responsibility of the devices.
Like, so what happens if something breaks?
Exactly.
Kind of like by accepting it, you acknowledge that you're responsible.
Yeah, so hopefully these, this policy will help kind of bring that to the forefront and, you know, when these policies are officially updated, it will cause a bit of a ripple effect into handbooks and, you know, we can be sending that gets highlighted for families in the fall, um, which is probably, probably best for me. But going forward, we hope to have families have a better understanding that this Chromebook maker's house is using, that you have some responsibility for it.
That's specific to Chromebook?
Yeah, and even the, because Tom and I, we joked that even the, one of our kids damaged their Chromebook, so I had to, and I received, uh, what was supposed to be a bill, but I, because I know Tom, I was like, Tom, can you look at this? Am I, so it was.
Yeah.
Nothing on it. Didn't say what was, uh, didn't say where to, just said make a check to the town. I was like, before I do that. So, so I think that'll be great because then, you know, being able to.
Yeah.
And I know Tom was already addressing it, so I'm not worried about that part, but I think that's great that we'll have better correspondence in that way. So really, it's very.
Yeah.
All right, so we move on to the next one.
Sure. IJN DBC is the corresponding staff responsible use of tech, technology. So just as the policy above identifies that children won't be signed up for accounts when they're under thirteen without parental permission. This advises staff that we can't sign children up for accounts if they're under thirteen because it's a violation of COPA and FERPA. Also that our staff are, uh, assigned devices and we want a safe network for everybody. And so the same, um, you know, software that filters and has a firewall is, is protecting, um, staff and students. Uh, so that, those are just the pieces that were updated with IJN DBC.
We have to make sure the motion is right because the letters aren't right. So maybe it is. Like it's IJN to be DB, not IB, and then IJ and DBC.
Okay, well, we don't have to make any motions tonight. It's next time. So when we.
Right, this is first reading.
Correct, first reading, yes.
How someone says the vote required.
Shouldn't, should, the blue sheet is not correct.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, that's a good catch.
I just want to make sure that we wanted to go into the.
That would not be good.
Correctly. Yeah. Sorry, I'm going to disrupt. I was just following along.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ryan, every time you said the letters, I was like, where is it getting? I know, I know. I'm looking at the blue document and it's the other one.
Oh, thank you.
You might not have this one because this one has the motion on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, 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 it's okay.
Ryan, can you just comment? You mentioned something about making sure that underage students or third party are, are not signed up for particular software or. Can you just? Help me understand that reference.
So for, uh, yeah, I can, I can explain this to you. So for example, sometimes, um, a teacher might want, um, to use a certain website, like Givikator Quizlet or Blazoo or any of those things, right? Um, and sometimes students need to have an account to go over to use them. And so what COPA says is that, um, teachers cannot say like, oh, I want to use this for my class, but some sign of the law, you know, my second grade. Yep, parents have to give. For backup.
But then they can proceed and register as an underage user.
Yes. Like, those sites are designed for teachers. They're designed for students. They are safe, but it's just like, you know, we need to make sure that.
Okay. Right, that's. Yeah. Yeah. That's why I was asking, I was curious, like, how are they, how are we going to access these programs without underage kids?
Right, and then this is supposed to go through the tech, through Jackie first, before they, that's what the policy says.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, it's, it's tough. I mean, there's tons of resources out there and many of them are great.
Yeah.
And, you know, teachers want to use them. We want our students to have access to them, but also, you know, we need to have some gatekeeping and making sure that whatever we're doing is.
So what do you think the process would look like? Well, a teacher at the beginning of the year says, hey, I think I'm going to utilize these resources and then have the parent sign off upfront, or is like.
So I, for example, thought something like that at the beginning of seventh grade. And I was like, you know, for such and such class, these are the websites I want to use. Here's the link if you as a parent want to check them out. This is how we plan to use them. You sign off, sign off, and.
So it was helpful?
Question asked. It was, it was very helpful. And I was like, oh, great, yes. That's all we, they're great. My kid uses them. They're, they are great, you know? So it would be, I think, just formalizing that process. Everyone.
Everyone will have to do.
Yeah.
There'll be a lot of that, I would assume.
There's like a list of SPS, like some generalized. Something that, um, Jackie's working on. I don't know if you want to talk more about that, Ryan, but creating more of an approved list of.
Yeah.
Oh.
Pieces of technology that the district approves of and supports. So meaning if a teacher has an issue with something, someone in the district will help them. A list, separate from that list, a, a list that the district approves of but does not support. So like, if you want to use this website, thumbs up, but you're on your own. Probably geared out if you have a problem. Um, and then so from there, teachers would be able to.
Yeah, so we, we, that's right, it is. We spent a lot of time on, um, just. No, I'm glad that they're. How teachers can, then the flow, I think, Dr. Porkowski mentioned a little bit was that even before it gets to the parents, giving permission, it's teachers coming to Jackie to ensure that, um, the technology is sort of, you know, safe and approved and aligned with our system. So we have some internal stuff to do just to make sure, um, all those pieces are working together. The policy aligns that. So, um, that they're all, they all seem to be working in sync. No, it's helpful. No, I just, I'm glad that you guys had talked about how to kind of facilitate that.
Is that last?
I guess I'm concerned about the sign.
No, go ahead, you go. I am just concerned about how to manage that from a teacher perspective.
What you do is opt out, like if if you have a list, like if you come up with a pretty comprehensive list of what the district and our director approves, then could you do just an opt-out, or does it have to be opt number ten? Yeah.
No, 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 seems like that would be easier.
Yeah.
Where does the line cross between approval of this? What does it, so from a technology perspective, I'm guessing this is literally based on internet safety and security, but from an academic perspective, how does that cross over if a teacher really thinks that this resource is important for their students? Probably more so happening at the high school level, I don't know.
It's not safe, though, then. Yeah, I feel like two, those two things will always need to be true, that it's safe and education, you know.
And most educational websites will be safe, you know, the majority, the majority of educational websites are not nefarious. You know what I mean? Like, the majority of them are gonna be safe. They want teachers using their products, and they're gonna want to prove that they're safe, right? So I don't, this isn't like a huge problem, I would say, like MASP's and websites that are unsafe. It's just like, everyone's also trying to catch up with a moving target, you know, there's always new new things coming and that everyone needs to learn how to comply with.
Yeah, I also think it's more of an issue of parents knowing.
Yes.
Right, because you have those situations. Is that the last sentence in there, parents wishing to limit or restrict must do do so in writing? Is that true across the board with any kind of opt-out with the curriculum? Is that where that sentence is?
Parents can always opt out of.
I I I understand that, but do they always have to do it in writing?
I think they do.
Is that pretty consistent? Like, if it's a book they don't want their kids to read or something?
I believe that we, that we want it to be consistent with whatever is a family process, so this should be consistent.
That's what I was gonna, okay. That's what I figured, because that'll make it easier for parents if they just know that's the way it happens.
Okay, so what if the teacher comes up with a new resource that they just discovered midway through the year, but we've already, do they have to continue to get these approvals from the tech director?
It's not to the director. Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, honestly.
They should too.
I don't I don't know another way around it, because honestly, what happens if they come up with something new and it's great and it's exciting and obviously don't have bad intentions, but what if, you know, and then it is what it is? This is what we have to figure out, like, we need to.
Hopefully, teachers are planning enough that that won't often happen.
Make that right.
Right, yeah.
It's.
It's annoying, it's frustrating, but I also don't know how we would work around it, right?
Seems.
And this is only for kids under thirteen and under, so once you get to the.
No, I think.
Under thirteen, but but we still, every, the teachers do wanna use things that are new.
Under thirteen. Still.
Every technology resource should be reviewed by the tech team.
Yes.
Yeah, agree.
But for, if you're working as, the teacher's gonna sign kids up for a new account on some new platform that's not associated with our, like, Google package or something like that, they need, if the child is under thirteen, you need to communicate to the family for parental permission or else it's a violation of COPA.
That makes sense.
So those are the steps that we would follow. So maybe in a high school example, because the students are not under thirteen. We still need to run by the tech director, but it may not be the case that um we need to see parental approval.
I feel like that's good practice. I don't really have, I know that'll create an issue for teachers every once in a while, but I think that's good practice. That it's a collaborative between the tech, the director of technology and the teacher, right?
Right.
It just feels like good practice to me.
Well, yeah, because if a teacher could find a new website, it'd be safe and appropriate, then it's then available for the. Yeah, that's the way mine, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's more about how we.
Well, they'll be real easy for sure.
Yeah, easiest easiest for teachers as possible.
Well, and also our director of technology.
Right, right.
Exactly, that's a lot of.
Well, she was the one that was pushing it too, she was like, they need to come to me.
I mean, we have to.
They're supposed to come to me.
I think that's easier to be proactive and get things coming in than she's doing now, chasing them all down.
Actually, yes, yeah.
Small work now.
Yeah. You know, when they cause, you know, not even necessarily a harmful thing, but it could not complement our network and cause a ripple effect. You know what I mean? That's what's happening now, so we've got too much stuff on there.
And I guess this will be like an internal, there's gonna be a, a, there's gonna be a trickle from this policy, which is by X date, you need to have submitted X technology in order to use, because otherwise, you know, I think that's, that seems tricky, so.
At least sometimes.
She's gonna need to figure out, yeah.
That's one of the reasons we wanted to get this policy.
Yeah.
Moving.
Yes, makes sense.
Okay.
Yep.
And the last component is just I, not just, but IJNDBA inappropriate use. We needed to update the policy uh to include just the protections around students uh who are potentially trying to disrupt or degrade the system. So we added some language around that. And since this last policy was written, there's a new thing called artificial general intelligence, generative intelligence, which we're all sort of navigating. And we, in the policy, wanted to be clear that um inappropriately produced um work using uh artificial, you know, generative intelligence is prohibited and considered to be like cheating. Uh, like cheating is considered cheating, so nowhere in our policy did it refer to that. We we do have handbook rules against cheating uh and things like that, but we needed to be explicit in our technology policy that we treat unauthorized um use as cheating, which um is in our, is in our tech policy. And then will be tied into the handbook to to list the inappropriate use of generative AI as as cheating. So we need to first be in this tech policy and then will be also reflected in our.
And you'll notice there's a bullet in there that says that students may use generative AI when it's explicitly permitted. So it's not like we're saying it's never allowed, it's just there need to be some parameters around the teacher's ability to say whether and when and how it is or is not used.
So I'm working with um, we have another subset of of staff, and there's actually three students on it, working on how will we update the handbook to reflect that? And also, are there other practices that we wanna be using with students? Like, um, remember, how do we properly cite things? Or what happens when we are given the opportunity to use AI? How is that properly cited? So we're thinking both about how to educate students and also have the handbook and technology policies all line up. So there's a phone people working on that, um, including how to update our handbook language, which will be ready this this spring.
So when you say work inappropriately produced from gen- generative AI, what does that mean?
So an example could be um when perhaps a social studies teacher asks a student to like do, we're specifically instructing the research process, students are supposed to use primary sources, they're not, they're explicitly told at the beginning and it's on the assignment that they're not to use generative AI. The student in that case would then um use generative AI to complete the research paper after the assignment specifically says not to do that. That would be considered cheating because from the outset, it was made clear that um it would be inappropriate to use generative AI.
That's that's why I pointed out that last bullet. I think it's anything, anytime it's not explicitly permitted or integrated, it's.
I just think we're gonna have to make sure that then we go through, have to do like an AI, an audit of all assignments and make sure that it says up or down on AI or how to use AI, right? Because this policy only works if the classes are defining how AI can and cannot be used.
Well, it says, no, it says explicitly permitted, so it's, it's, if it's not explicitly permitted, but it's not allowed.
Okay. Stay there. I just think at the classroom level, it's gonna have to be really clear.
Yes, there's gonna, yes, absolutely.
Because people are gonna go back.
But I I don't think we have to like panic yet.
Oh, I'm not panicking, I'm just saying, yeah, I'm not panicking.
We just, like, I think this is probably the smartest way to use it, but.
Yeah, because this way, the AI, if it's not explicitly permitted, it falls under that like, which is that way. Which I think historically, everybody knows.
In any.
In any form.
I'm just, I'm just, again, I'm I'm fine with this policy. I just know from like submitting journal articles at the journal level, they are telling you what is allowable and what is not. And some journals say nothing, and some journals say you can do this, but you can't do this. So I do think at some point at the classroom level, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, I mean, I think the teachers are already having those expectations for sure.
Yeah.
And it depends on the subject area of the assignment, what the assignment is, they're assessing and all that stuff, so, yeah.
Yeah, it does. Yeah.
How will these changes impact sort of like social media use for sports or clubs or?
Um, that would be under the.
There are some, um, in the, this spot, the section on um staff.
That's right.
Yeah, staff use, um.
It's under staff use D internet?
Yeah.
Number six, little A. I'm following you, okay.
Yeah, it's like highlighted.
Yep. Yeah, feature pictures of students or their work, as long as the students are not at gun file, full, written consent has been obtained from the student's parents or parents or guardians, or the platform adheres to COPA and FERPA regulations.
And also, I'm sorry, your, the question was how will it have impacted, so that part is new. None of the other sections in white have have changed. So I think we're just looking to bring things under, um, just to make sure that in those places where um there's students pictured, that small A's followed. Uh, also, we added some language about backing it up, knowing that we're subject to um the public records requests that um, you know, staff should use, like their situating, they have to use their situated email so that where uh we can follow through on that. So there's not a tremendous change to um staff controls related to social media.
And the, how do we know what's, well, I guess, the list of what's approved and what's not approved in terms of platforms? They have to adhere to the COPA and FERPA regulations.
Like Instagram, for example, like, because Instagram, if you adhere to COPA and FERPA, no idea.
Well, that's why I think we, I mean, I'm not the tech expert, but that's why I think it helps to go through the the tech director because um there could be a platform, like, maybe we improve Twitter but not Blue Sky, and then it's like, oh, it's on the policy. And so I think we could never keep up with something that's out there, so I think that's where the rules came from.
What if someone's using a platform or something that they're suddenly gonna just find out isn't common, is still approved? How does that impact their current process this moment?
I think they would submit it to the tech director and say, I would like to use this social media platform to promote this activity that my students are doing. And then the tech director would say, um, he would give them a response on that. So I think that's the process that we're proposing, is that there's, we're making sure that anything that's used um on our system, we need to get permission for, so we know what's on.
I mean, that could also be.
Also, we have a tech director.
And that could also be a great conversation, because hopefully the tech director would say, what's the learning goal? And then the tech director with her expertise will say, you can't use that, but you could use that. Sort of like instructional design, right? It's like, hopefully there are enough substitutes out there, you know what the learning goal is, that they can come up with something, right? Hopefully.
Alright, so.
First reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, first reading.
Yeah.
Alright.
That's probably worth.
Yeah, thank you.
It's good to have that, feels good for this.
Yeah, Jackie, thirteen.
Yeah. I know, she's.
They could very.
Nice to have a tech team. So good. Yeah. So happy about that.
Alright, um, another SPS competency determination policy, you know, this one we are voting on, guys.
Yep, so we talked about this, not at the last meeting, but prior meeting, because it's been a little break. I know, it was supposed to happen in the last meeting. That's okay, we're back. Um, y'all remember the background here, it's just because.
Yep.
The MASP is kind of under a state mandated criteria. Are there any questions?
It hasn't changed at all since our first reading. Anything you wanna discuss or?
I'm just wondering, um, the last little bit, there where it says the principal may, on a case-by-case basis, review and determine.
Yep.
You know, is the district giving the principal a bit of guidance on that? And just worry about one person having the responsibility to make that, and that would become a.
We mostly felt that we needed to have something in there because this change happened so suddenly for kids who moved here, maybe in high school. Didn't have the opportunity to do some of this stuff and would have missed it, so it's kind of like that, but I don't know about there's other.
I just would hate for it to be like a thing and then the principal being the only person, so, okay.
The only person.
Yeah, it's a good question. It always goes through me, any um alternate to a graduation, in this case, under this clause.
Okay.
That would be a conversation with me at probably no way in advance, like, if you have a kid out in medical, they're coming back and I'm taking a, an alternate course, maybe a teacher to help them, you know, very specific.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And I would know about that, and we talked about in advance and approval, so, yeah, it would be a.
Yeah. Okay. So you don't want the person sitting at the front desk to be the one that has to like make that tough?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Ryan would be involved with that process too, with his curriculum, so it would be multiple central office people, it would be a team decision.
Okay. I figured, but just on the. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
And it is really macro, like those like said, we need to.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it's very rare.
I totally get it, why it's there.
But it's a good hope to have, if you didn't have it, if there wasn't a child in that situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, terrible.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Anything else, any other questions?
That's good.
Alright, take a vote.
No, you do it, go ahead. You're so good at it.
Uh, I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the SPS competency determination policy as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we have approval of minutes from March tenth.
Make a motion to approve the uh school committee minutes from the March tenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lawrence?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Um, no responses. Um, other business. Took the bottom most, you said something. Oh.
Um.
Representative Kerry potentially.
Feature agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Would be for um, maybe nineteenth, probably.
Okay.
I'll coordinate that, I'm like, no.
I'll try to find information too about that state group. There's like a group of mask and superintendents and things that were coming together to some advocacy group on this.
Oh, yeah.
So you're not alone.
No, I know I'm not alone. I'm just gonna help solve it, though.
I love that, you should.
I am.
You should.
I am.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
At least have answers.
Right.
Well, yeah.
I think, I mean, it's, Patrick will be, it'll be nice to get his perspective too on it. I mean, the state has to see this as well. Essentially, it's there are dollars that are being spent on these out-of-district places. So we'll see, we'll see what information we can get.
Yeah, okay. Um, so that's future agenda items, and nobody has anything else, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at eight oh nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.